And good evening, welcome to the school committees Thursday. I forget what day it is, April?
April eighth.
April eighth, I'm so sorry, April eighth, 2021, school committee meeting. It is seven eleven, I am recalling or calling the meeting to order, we are returning from executive session. Ms. Koshin should be joining us shortly. So I am going to jump right into our agenda. We have minutes from previous school committee meetings that need to be voted on. Regular session. September third, 2020. There any questions, comments, changes that need to be made to our September third meeting minutes? Is I will entertain a motion to approve September third.
Moved by Dawn.
By Catherine.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Catherine, all in favor, Ms. Handstead.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Ms. Noworski?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Sorry, yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, thank you. September tenth, 2020, regular session meeting minutes, any questions, comments, changes? You know, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept and approve the September tenth twenty, actually, I have one slight change. Right on top, it's a school committee meeting, September tenth, 2021, we just need to change that to.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. Let's not rush time too much. A motion. September tenth, regular session meeting minutes. Removed by Dawn.
Seconded by Catherine.
By Dawn, seconded by Catherine, all in favor, Ms. Handstead.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Ms. Noworski?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. And finally, September twenty fourth, 2020, any questions, comments, changes? No. I will entertain a motion to approve September twenty fourth, 2020, regular session meeting minutes.
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Dawn, all in favor, Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Noworski?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes, thank you, okay. And this evening, does anyone from the school committee have any individual comment they wanted to? Any announcements they want to share? Okay, and central office, Dr. Batello?
Sure, I'll get some repeats on this, but just wanted to applaud all of the teachers and staff and administrators at the elementary schools for all of the work that went into bringing all our kids back with three feet. There was tremendous, you know, effort behind the scenes by everyone pitching in together to get that done, and the kids were ecstatic as well as the teachers to have the kids back in that capacity, so it was awesome to see.
Definitely, we second you for sure. Mr. Boudet?
Just a couple of things, one, I did want to thank a particular member of the school committee who was nice enough to fund pizzas for the people who did a lot of the moving on that day, that person will remain nameless. And second off, we had an update from MSBA on what their schedule is going to be. On April fourteenth, they're supposed to vote or do their announcements, or they vote their announcements on who's being moved forward through the SLI process. And the, and the applications for next year's SOIs for our piece of the program aren't due until June twenty fifth? Twenty fifth, twenty sixth, somewhere, last week in June, so we'll go with that, so.
Great, thank you. Dr. Cuska?
Just two quick things that aren't really COVID specific, one is extended day, Carol White is planning on welcoming back some preschoolers to the program, and I think as soon as maybe next week, so its parents, I think, are very excited about that as well. And we're looking to try to get a flyer out for next year to show, you know, the extended day hours, and I know parents will be looking forward to getting information as well, so they can plan for the future, so. Things are starting somewhere, getting a little bit back to where we need to be, right, for now. And then the other piece of information I just wanted to share, because I know a lot of questions have come up about where we go next with strategic planning. And I had mentioned that we would be starting that process, first, I had talked about in the summertime, but given the need to do some of COVID repair work next year, and it's going to extend into the full school year, we're going to start the strategic planning in the fall. I actually have a meeting set up with Andre Brevinal from Teachers 21 on Monday to talk about a proposal and see if we can come to an agreement there, and I will fill you in when I, after I meet with him as well. And I have some other options that I reached out to Tom Scott about if that one doesn't work out, so. I'll keep you posted as I know more about that, but at least we're getting the things in motion. And that's it for now.
Great, thank you. And this evening, we have some special guests, we don't have our our student representatives, and we don't have anyone registered for public comment, so I'm going to move right down to our presentations. So I would like to introduce two of our students, Kylie McLeod and Saki, is it called Carney? Great, call me, they, they are part of Generation Ratify Massachusetts. So without further ado, I'm going to hand them the floor and they can explain their, their involvement in Generation Ratify.
Hi, and thank you very much for having us here today, we could not be more excited to speak with you. My name is Saki Colcarney, I'm a freshman at the high school, my pronouns are she, hers.
And my name is Kylie McLeod, I'm a sophomore, and my pronouns are also she, her, hers.
As Mrs. Raffey said, we are from Generation Ratify, Generation Ratify is the intersectional youthhood movement to advance gender equality through a combination of electing, empowering, advocating, and educating. Recently, we launched the Me and MA movement, and so we're here today to discuss supplying free period products to students at Holliston High. I personally learned about the term period poverty in a workshop hosted by the organization Mission Red in December. Period poverty, if you do not know, is defined as inadequate access to menstrual products and education. It's pretty easy to assume that this is a problem that plagues the impoverished communities, and I will admit, I initially thought the same thing. But after the workshop, I did more research, and I found that this is an issue that is extremely prevalent in America. Countless preschoolers across the country and here in Massachusetts as well, this school, all because they aren't able to access the necessary products. As a firm believer that our socioeconomic status shouldn't determine our ability to succeed, and having never gone without myself, I was horrified. By missing pieces of their education, low-income menstruators are put at a disadvantage as a result of their socioeconomic standing. I met with House Majority Leader Claire Cronin to discuss this issue a couple of weeks ago, and she voiced the same concern. She said, quote unquote, "This is an equity issue, it's an issue that affects low-income students, and that's why it's so important to address." The school district's unwillingness to advocate for the needs of menstruators creates an environment of disunion and demonstrates a lack of solidarity with those who desperately need it. Bleeding through your clothes is an uncomfortable and awkward experience, and it's even worse when the necessary reasons are not in place. Although products are available at the nurse's office in school, it is unreasonable for an administration to ask students to miss an entire class by going to the nurse, especially during the pandemic. It is necessary to have free menstrual products available in the school's bathroom so that menstruators have easy access to the products and can leave class for a few minutes without disrupting their learning.
All right, so when we began planning this project back in about January-ish, I knew very little about menstrual inequity. I am fortunate enough to live in a house that can afford period products anytime that I need them, and as it often is, you don't realize the privileges that you have until you understand that others don't have them. I thought nothing of it when I walked into the bathrooms at school and saw the age-old empty tampon dispensers, because I had more than enough in my bag. And honestly, periods are a pretty taboo subject, and they shouldn't be. I can't control the natural cycle that my body goes through every month, and it's not disgusting or gross for my body to function as it should. The topic of menstruation shouldn't be continually shushed, and by giving students access to necessary products, it will become more comfortable for people to discuss. Now, you may be thinking, why do you care so much if it doesn't even affect you? And honestly, a lot of people have asked me the same thing. What I've come to realize, though, is that implementing this simple change could impact so many young menstruators across our town. I want for every person who has a period at Holliston High School to have access to menstrual products, and I want to switch the narrative, with your help, we can.
As Kylie said, periods and period products are often viewed as a taboo subject, and most people wouldn't ever willingly admit that they can't afford them. Menstruators in middle and high school would never, ever dream of telling somebody that they have to miss school or use socks because they can't pay for pads. Instead, they suffer in silence and consequently their educational attainment and achievement deteriorates. Eighty-six percent of menstruators have unexpectedly started their period in public without the supplies they need, according to Free the Tampons data. Eight in ten improvised with toilet paper or something else, and sixty-two percent went immediately to the store to buy supplies, which is not an option for most high school students. One in three women went immediately home. A study conducted by Harris Insights and Analytics in 2018 found that one in four menstruators aged thirteen to nineteen have missed class because they didn't have access to tampons or pads. One in five menstruators cannot afford to purchase products, and two in three menstruators have worn a tampon for over six hours, this is inexcusable.
Medical experts and gynecologists recommend that tampons are changed about every four to six hours, and that nothing other than menstrual hygiene products are used in order to stay safe and healthy. When some students are using products past a safe time or using socks to stay clean, isn't that an indication that it's time to see a change in the way this school approaches the subject? Providing access to menstrual products will help innumerable menstruators, and although their gratitude may go unseen and unheard, the positive impact of this simple investment can be measured through qualitative data. At the moment, four states require schools to provide menstrual products to students, and those would be New Hampshire, New York, California, and Illinois. In New York City, a 2.4% increase in attendance in menstruators was observed in the first year alone, according to Free the Tampons data. Holliston Public Schools could see a similar jump in attendance if we choose to start supplying products to schools. Currently, seven other states, now including Massachusetts, have bills in their state legislature that would tackle this issue.
Delaware is one of those states that has a bill in their legislature, and Carrie Stahl, who is a high school teacher from Milford, Delaware, keeps a stash of tampons and pads in her classroom to save students from having to trek down to the nurse's office and potentially miss a whole class period while they wait for the nurse's attention. My current English teacher, Mrs. Jamie Murphy, who teaches at the high school, also supplies products to those who need it. Teachers having to use their own salary that this system provides to menstrual products is glaring evidence that our school needs to see a change. Oftentimes, cost is a main opposition to providing products to schools. But in this case, you'll find that the amount of money invested is lower than the amount of money Holliston Public Schools wastes when students do not attend high school. In the 2018 to 2019 school year, 797 students attended HHS, an estimated 400 of those students are menstruators. In 2018, Holliston Public Schools received $11,358,539 in state funding. Although public school is free, there is still a tuition for each student that is covered by taxes. When students miss school, money is not spent as intended. If you estimate conservatively and say that 25% of menstruators, around 100 students for Holliston High, miss five days of school each due to their period, $10,841 that the state provides to the school is not used.
The investment for the first year, which would cover the dispensers and the products in the six bathrooms at Holliston High School, would be $2,850. And in subsequent years, the investment would only be $1,250. With this investment of 0.03% for the first year and 0.015 for subsequent years of the school's annual budget, the school could ensure increased attendance rates among menstruators, send a strong message of inclusion and compassion, and ensure that the tax dollars intended to support these students are actually used as intended, which they simply cannot do when students are not in school. Offflow is a company that is willing to work with us to supply products and dispensers. Their products are biodegradable and made sustainably, and are provided at a lower cost than other companies. Their products come to about 25 cents per product, in comparison, other ones on the market cost 50 cents to a dollar per unit. They're willing to supply us with eight dispensers and 10 boxes with 500 products each for the first school year, and 10 boxes of products the following years. If you would like, we are more than happy to send you the contact of the company's representative.
To conclude, menstrual inequity is everywhere, and to ignore the problem is to ignore injustice. As a society, we're not conditioned to carry toilet paper around us, but we have this expectation that menstruators are always going to have tampons on them. Our main focus as young people should be our education, and not if we will suffer from toxic shock syndrome as a result of keeping our product in too long, or if we will be able to afford pads the next time our cycle comes around. Unfortunately, the statistics Kylie and I discussed show that this is too often the case. As a student at this high school, I strongly urge you to start supplying period products to schools the following school year. Thank you for your time, me and Kylie are happy to answer any questions at this point, if you have them.
So thank you, ladies, I just want to congratulate you for being so brave in such a role model to talk about something that, that other teens and even quite frankly adults think is taboo. So for you to speak so freely in front of all of us in the town is just, is really impressive, and I congratulate, and thank you. So committee members, I saw Lisa's hand first, Lisa, you have a question?
No, not a question, I was just going to say similar words, I think that's one of the most articulate presentations we've ever had before the school committee, you guys really did your research and organized information so well, and you, I just wanted to congratulate you both on a job really well done. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, I just learned something.
And Louise?
So I won't repeat all the praise, but that, and then some, very proud of you, young women. I do have a question, actually, and it comes in, and then just a context, contextual kind of observations. My question is, were your cost estimates, which I don't, I didn't write down the exact numbers, but the rough numbers of, it was like 2,000 the first year and 1,000 the next year, for Holliston High School, was that based on the assumptions for Upflow? And their cost structure, or is that general, and then the Upflow cost structure would potentially be less?
I am happy to answer this, I met with a representative, and I, what I did was I provided them with the amount of bathrooms that Holliston has and how many students we have. And so based on that, they told us that to cover buying dispensers, not installing, but to cover buying dispensers and products, the cost would be $2,850, and the following years, just to supply products, since the dispensers have already been installed and bought, the amount of money needed would be 1,250.
So it was, it was based on Upflow's products, okay?
Yes.
Thank you, that's really important, because I don't know if for something like this, we'd have to go to bed. The only other thing I was going to say to you, like, I, I, I think this is such an interesting challenge, because whether it's based on socioeconomic need or not, there are those moments, right? And I remember working for a company probably 20 years ago, and they put this in as a policy, and I think that did more to boost morale among women than like almost anything else they could have done, because we all appreciated those moments when we didn't have something, so. And it made a difference, right? So anyway, I very much in support, and thank you for coming to talk to us.
Cynthia?
Yes, just to echo those same sentiments, thank you, young ladies, for coming to speak about this issue, I did, I did want to say one thing, which was that the MASCE, which is the Massachusetts Association for School Committees, did have a resolution back in 2019 where that was passed, as I was a delegate there, where we were trying to advocate at the state, at the state level, for them to provide the resources and funding for schools to provide period products for every bathroom and locker rooms is also included in that resolution. So it wasn't a matter of like, we're not resistant to the idea of it, because it seemed in your presentation that we were not, I don't know if I misheard that or not, but we certainly are, and I do very much appreciate you both coming to talk with us about this tonight.
Anyone else from the committee? Andy?
Thank you, as one of the few people on this, in this meeting, who probably can't relate directly to some of your anecdotes, I think it's important that you really shared that with us in a, in a way that really kind of made, made these issues real. I have, I have two young ladies at home who are going to be eventually up at the high school, and it really inspires me that you've taken this kind of opportunity as leaders to take this on. So thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. And then there was one other question I had, I think it was more for Keith, and that was related to, do we need to, if we were to move forward with something like this, do we need to send something out to bid, or can we use a contractor like this, is that a situation that we can kind of move on, or is it going to take more time than that?
It's going to take a little more time than that, it's not going out to bid, but we need to quote it out, so.
Thank you very much, I think Mary has some pressure here with the presentation after you did such a nice job, thank you.
Dr. Cuska, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, no, I was just going to thank the girls for their advocacy and maturity on this, you know, what can be a sensitive topic for some people, and you did so much research, I'm really impressed by it. Happy to have you share that information with my office, with Mr. Boudet, our business manager, and myself, and email some information, and if we need, we have more questions, we could meet with you at some other time, but thank you so much.
I appreciate that, right, so I was, I was going to just echo that and say for next steps, I would certainly reach out to Mr. Boudet, as he is the business manager, and he is the right contact for you in terms of moving forward. Mary, I didn't know, did you have your hand up, did you want to say something to the, okay. Ladies, thank you so much, and you are free to hang out and stay for the rest of the meeting, and if you have other things you need to do, feel free to head off if you need to, but thank you so much, it was nice to have you.
Thank you so much for having us.
I do have a question. Um, so when you say moving forward, do you mean that there's a good chance that we could see this being implemented within the twenty-two, twenty-three, or sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two school year? Or like, like how long do you see this process playing out for?
I would say it's a, it's a, it's a good possibility, but we need to do a little homework ourselves, so I think if we can make it work and in a way that works with all the systems we have in place and get things into motion in a timely manner, we're certainly interested in it, so I just can't promise you until we get a little more information and do a little more homework ourselves as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Saki, you've got a future, I think, in business deals or sales, like you are not leaving until you close that sale, are you?
Or journalism, or advertising, that was a very good question.
It was.
Public policy, healthcare policy.
Nicely done, ladies.
All right, wonderful, thank you so much, I will be sure to reach out in the next couple of days with that, all the links you've asked for.
Great, thank you.
All right, great, thank you so much, have a nice evening.
Thank you again, bye-bye.
Bye. Mary Greendale, welcome to the school committee meeting, it's nice to see you, I'm sorry we're not in person. And I believe everybody on the committee knows Mary, but if you don't, raise your hand and introduce yourself, but I am pals with Mary, anyone, does everyone know Mary? Great. All right, Mary, welcome, thank you for joining us, I shared with the committee your your petition for the Comprehensive Long Range Planning Committee, so take it away, Mary.
Well, those kids are, are going to be a hard act to follow, Andy, you're absolutely right, I was thinking about it as they were talking, it's like, God, I'm not prepared like they are. Anyway, um, so it was actually, if I remember correctly, it was at the behest of the school committee that I started to think about this again. I think about long-range planning a bit in town, I think it's been limited over my entire lifetime here. But I vaguely recall that the school committee or members of the school board were actually talking about, we needed to have a long-term plan for the town, and I know that you folks have plans and regularly update your strategic plans, and that they play a huge role in how you run your operations, so. I didn't see any of the, you know, stakeholders actually picking up the ball and that kind of thing, and that kind of got me thinking too. I think everybody is so busy that sits inside town government, that to, to start to initiate and take on a project, it really is its own separate kind of effort, might, might be daunting. I talked to, you know, people in the planning board, and we can all imagine with all the work they have going on right now with 555, hopping Brooks, that, you know, you talk about added work right now with them, and they kind of roll their eyes, so. Anyway, to make a long story short, the bottom line was, I decided that a citizen's petition was actually the best way to go, rather than to go through one of the boards. I've had very positive response from all of the boards, I haven't asked them to take formal votes, I don't think it's, you know, it ranks as, as that. One did, I think the ConCom did, but that's fine, I just want folks to be aware. The goal here is to create a vision for the town, and then ultimately to create the plan that would implement the vision. And one of the things that makes it important right now is that I think because of all of the interest in 555, people are suddenly realizing that things like bylaws don't just happen, but if you don't have the bylaws in place, you can't really make things look or be or operate the way that you want them to. So the goal here is to create this vision, now, I suspect that we're all pretty much on the same page, but because we live in our little silos, and the Board of Assessors certainly doesn't visit the school committee very often, ever, and, you know, there's hardly any interaction across the silos. I was, I was, I did a lot of research on this with other municipalities and with professional organizations. I've been asked, why aren't we doing a master plan, master plan, and that's because actually in the long-range planning process, there is a place where you do do those specialties, the seven elements of a master plan, and their, you know, economic development, land use, and that kind of stuff, but master plans are based on land use, they aren't up here in the clouds, they aren't visionary. So the purpose of this committee would be to take all the plans that we have related to, you know, long-range planning, and sort and sift and see if peoples or committees are actually all march in the same direction, and I think we'll find we are pretty much. But there may be places where some committees are veering off a little bit, and maybe we want to get together and have a conversation about that, but the bottom line is ultimately what I'd like to see is that when Holliston looks back at this time, we don't regret that we didn't do things that I think right now some folks are regretting that we didn't do fifteen or twenty years ago, when some of the issues started. So the Long Range Planning Committee would be separate from everybody else. The departments and boards would be represented on it, there is, it's clear, I did not include every department. They've asked to be included, so I will do that. Bottom line is then that, you know, I think we're going to have to find a, a way to make that big structure work, but that will be the committee's problem, frankly. I don't want to legislate to them how they would operate their committee. There's going to be enough work for a lot of people, but they can create working groups by whatever categorizations that they want. And for a step would be to collect all of those studies, review those, and sort of put them into some format, format that would make them relevant to one another. And then the big part, and this is the big reason that I went through a citizen's petition, I want town meeting to own this, I want the people to own this, and I want them to participate vigorously in responding in forums and surveys and that sort of thing, I don't want this to be top-down, I don't want it to be us telling them what the plans should be, frankly, I'd really like it to be bottom-up. So we'll see how it, you know, what the reaction is at town meeting, not everybody likes to talk about planning, not everybody believes in it, I do. I've spent a lot of time in this town, this town is not given to do long-range planning. It's just not in our DNA, I guess, but bottom line is, we do have a bunch of studies and reports and some outdated plans, and I think there are places to start the conversations, anyway. But that, I'll just leave it at that, if you have questions, just holler, it's really pretty straightforward.
So does anyone have any questions tonight for Mary? And Louise?
Hi, Mary. It's maybe a suggestion, but before I get to it, I want to thank you for coming before us, thank you for putting the citizen's petition together. This is something that the school committee has been talking to or about for quite a while, and probably emerged initially out of the capital planning process, because then you're starting to talk about very big investments that should align to a strategic vision. Certainly for the district and for the community then, so I want to thank you for that. I think one thing, maybe you were planning on doing this as you present the idea or the article at town meeting. I think it'd be really helpful if you had a slide or two, or maybe even some handouts, that people in the community could, could get a better understanding of what long-range planning really is, because I don't think it's necessarily a commonly understood Because I don't think it's necessarily a commonly understood uh, concept. It's, it's intuitive at a very, very high level, but maybe what that looks like, what's, what's involved and how it differs from a master plan. Um, and you know, maybe an illustration of what that process might look like without being prescriptive, you know, just to help people wrap their heads around what it is you're actually hoping to accomplish. Cause I think it's a brilliant idea and people just need to, you know, they'll probably support it anyway because it sounds great. But um, a couple of slides wouldn't be bad.
Yeah, I am, I, I do plan to do something, um, partly because you just got to break up the night anyway. I mean,
That's right. Well, I, I always thought, you know, an intermission with cocktails.
Sell things out in the hallway.
Student entertainment.
Same. But the, the other thing is what I didn't get into um, is that there is, there is a relatively new process created by the American Planning Association um, that kind of supplants master plans. It's, it's sort of trying to move everybody away from that very rigid kind of format. And um, I tripped over it in, in Concord and ultimately was able to research and get back to the guy who quote invented it. And he's been generous enough to even send me um, his book before it goes to publication so that I'd know what it was all about. He retired, so he could write his book. I just happened to get him on a good day. Um, but that's the process that I'd like to explain to people in terms of why, what the advantages are of it. And not that it, it totally eliminates the, the master plan, but it shows how a master plan fits in under, you know, in certain areas in certain ways, because bylaws have to be, those own bylaws are always going to be a part of this. Those are always going to belong to the planning board and, and that kind of thing. And that is a master plan process. But anyway, I do, I do plan to do that. Um, and, and to do a presentation. I'll try to keep it brief. So, but thank you for the advice. I appreciate it.
Catherine?
I mean, thanks for calling me tonight. Um, you just mentioned Concord. Is that another town that has a plan like this? Or can you give us off the top of your head, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, a couple of other towns that have done it?
Who have long-range plans?
Yeah, you said you can, you mentioned.
I think even Midway does. I'm not positive about that, but I do have some and I can't probably off the top of my head. But all I can tell you is if you go to the Concord page and you plug in long-range plan and you, you thumb through or scroll through that plan, um, I was just really blown away by it. And then when I did further research, I realized that they had paid three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it. And I knew that Holliston's never gonna do that. So I did an awful lot of legwork. And I've got a lot of stuff in place that, you know, if people do want to go forward with this, that should shave off some of it. And as I say, the, we're, this is where I really don't like hiring consultants. And I used to do, this is what I did at, for work professionally. I mean, I was a, I, I headed up the Division of Community Services that oversaw the planners and so forth that went out into the cities and towns. And I, I, we funded so many master plans and we're not alone being a community that leaves a master plan sitting on a shelf. And it's because they're just not a really fluid document. These newer processes and over time and with technology and with the way that things move a lot more quickly and so forth, there are adaptations. Um, so I, I, you know, I need to be able to explain to people why not the traditional master plan? And then what's the advantage of this kind of approach? And then under that, within this kind of approach, the outreach to the public that is just so critical has to, again, in my view, be done by, by people as opposed to being interviewed by or, you know, organized by or trying to get an outside consultant. I mean, we've done it in the past. I've seen it. Um, the response is the same people that we see on this Zoom call. It's the people that we would have seen on last night's, you know, whatever meeting was going on last night. It would have been all of those of us who are already sucked into the process. And let's be honest, this isn't what we should be looking for. We should be looking for all those folks that we never see, but occasionally show up maybe on Facebook and say, what is going on? You know, um, I want those people. I want those people. And I think Facebook's been able to make it a lot easier to find them, you know? So I'm, that's my big, but that's the thing that makes me the most excited is I think we can really do a phenomenal job of, of outreach. I think there's a lot of potential.
I agree. And I also, I think that having examples to look at is a, is a useful tool for getting more people on board.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll check out Concord for sure. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. It's a, it was, it was, it was a real gift to find that because as I say, I kind of latched onto one thing and it was a great little, you know, breadcrumb trail.
Any other questions? I just, I, you know, I too, Mary, I think this is so important. And I think uh, the school committee has cared about this because, you know, at the end of the day, there is, and this is just a piece of it, not the whole plan. But at the end of the day, there is one pot of money and we really, you know, we need to, as a community, figure out how we're gonna use that pot or cup that pie or whatever analogy you want to use. Uh, we have, have been always felt that way. You know, it, it's hard to work in silos and just focus on your, you know, your own little area. Um, and I think it's, it's so much more powerful when it comes from, you know, a grassroots effort and it's people who really have the skin in the game. Like we, we live here. You should care about what's going on where you live, even if you might only be here for a short time. So I really appreciate you taking this um, to town, you know, to town meeting, because this has been, you know, we've had to be in our bonnet about this and I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Um, does anyone else?
If you do have any questions or if you have thoughts and suggestions or whatever, just send them to me. I mean, I'm trying to keep a, a diary of everything, you know, an inventory of all of the ideas and suggestions, because ultimately I don't plan on serving on this committee. Um, I have identified, however, and it's been pretty exciting for me, a couple of people who are, well, it's about four now, people who are really interested in it. So it's like, okay. And I don't mean people that are, you know, that you would predictably, one's just leaving um, uh, one of the boards in town now. And, you know, I mean, the fact that she's been contemplating staying involved was exciting. Anyway, it's really good. It's good. It's been a good process.
Great.
Thank you for all your work, Mary, on behalf of the town.
You're ready. Thanks, guys.
Gem. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Have a really good meeting. I hope you're not there until too late.
You won't. We'll be good.
Good.
We're doing the items.
Your idea of too late and mine might be a little different, but that's okay. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Excellent. Um, does anyone have a report from a subcommittee? No? Okay. And uh, superintendent's update on COVID. Boy, I can't wait till we kick that agenda item to the curb.
I feel the same. So I, I just have a few things this week. Um, we have a few cases that I'll be reporting out tomorrow and people may have heard at the um, middle school so that we will get that information out very quickly and update our COVID dashboard for tomorrow. The, as, as Dr. Patello indicated, it was very exciting to see our students come back in full person at grades four and five and our Placentino and grade three students all also had to shift rooms. I was a little confused myself because I was visiting rooms the other day and trying to remember. People were displaced to new, new rooms and everybody seemed to roll with the punches and really pleased to see how well the teachers and students have adapted, even on, you know, with all the changes that we've had to put forth this week, because we are getting close to having our secondary students back after vacation as well. We um, actually began our pool testing now at all four buildings. High school started this week. And I'm happy to say that we had all negative pools this week as well. So that's great news. And I would like to encourage people to try to put their students on that list. We, our numbers are in pretty good shape. I think as of today, I was told that the, I, I think it was grades three and five, but don't quote beyond that. We're up to about high forty percent, forty-six percent in a couple of grades. Middle school is still high thirties, I think. I don't think they've gone up to forty percent, but slightly increasing. High school, it was only one cohort right now because we're doing the next cohort next week until we're all back full in person. And I think we're only about sixteen percent. So given, you know, our high school students, it's gonna be hopefully, you know, not too long, but a little, at least sixteen and up, might be able to get vaccines in the next month or so. But still, you know, we, we really need this resource for students and it's very easy. Uh, the swabbing is done very seamlessly. The nurses and, and teachers have gotten so quick at gathering and the administrators gathering all that information and we get the results back in twenty-four hours. So the prevention we can do by the pool testing is really critical, because if we get a positive pool, only one so far, we then can antigen test right on the premises and get people back right in school. If everybody in the pool is negative but one person, we remove that one person and then we don't spread the um, virus any further. So it really is a good tool. Desi is funding it for the rest of the school year. So that's great news. I'm hoping we won't need it in the fall, because I'm hoping we're gonna be in much better shape. It's with the numbers increasing on vaccinations, including myself. I got my second one last night. So if I'm a little bit off tonight, you can figure out why. But, you know, I really am happy to see our staff getting vaccinated and hopefully our students will be getting vaccinated as well soon. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else, you know, those are really the most important things at the moment. The high school and middle school, as I mentioned earlier, will be, will starting back right after vacation. So April twenty-sixth is the timeline for them. And I think they're very excited. We have large numbers returning, high, high percentages. And Peter, can you make a note? Maybe we can get the percentages for the next meeting. We'll share out just how many, what percentage is back full in person. The remote numbers have significantly decreased. So we have much smaller numbers, but I don't have the full numbers here with me tonight. So I don't want to just guess at them and I'll get those for you. If there's anything I didn't think about because of my fuzziness from the vaccine, um, if you had questions for me, it might trigger um, something else that I might have wanted to add.
Any questions from the committee?
Just a comment. I'm impressed you're here tonight. I know that second vaccine can be a bit of a whopper. And so thank you for being so alert, encouraging.
It's just good to be that far along. And in a couple of weeks, they'll consider that, you know, I'll be in better shape as well.
And no other questions from the committee? Great. All right. Thank you, Dr. Cusco. And Dr. Patello, we had you down for COVID interventions. Um, and I know with the meetings changed, are you prepared? You're good? Take it away, Dr. Patello.
Keith, could you give me, oh, you gave me sharing rights. Wait, thanks. All right. Can you guys all see that well? All right, yeah. We really tried to focus on, um, you know, primarily on, you know, structures and systems we have in place. Um, uh, as well as trying to balance the need to, you know, support kids where they're at as well as provide necessary intervention um, and additional assessment to understand kids' needs in an extraordinary way, considering the, the, the times. Um, so I'm starting with the uh, the high school and the middle school. Um, at the high school, we have weekly intervention team meetings that include a, 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 a large group of people that really look at what kids are struggling, both academically and socially emotionally. And uh, figuring out what we can put in place in order to support their, um, their progress. And we also have, you know, weekly counselors meetings, which really focus just exclusively on the social emotional realm, though it obviously, um, you know, it, it intersects into the academic as well. Uh, part of those meetings is, is every other week, they really use a data-wise structure where they're looking at data in really specific ways and looking at issues of equity uh, as well, in order to understand how those factors are impacting kids. At the middle school, they have some really uh, tight structures as well. They have a bi-monthly uh, student assistant team meetings, which include the assistant principal and interventionists who really look at struggling students' uh, data. Uh, they then um, work together, the interventionists in particular, uh, with teams of teachers in order to figure out what can be done in the classroom as well as what can be done to support some kids outside the classroom. That outside uh, the classroom support, I'll talk about a little bit more later. Uh, but we also have similarly to the high school student support team, which is more of our um, counselors, also our assistant principal, um, Jess Beatty and uh, BCBA, who looks at kind of the behavioral manifestations of students who struggle socially emotionally. Um, and so all those groups are really looking at, uh, uh, you know, trying to identify kids and figure out what we can do to support them. Some of the data we look at, we look at course grades, we look at attendance, course level assessments, uh, teacher counselor reports, students who self-advocate for themselves, parent communication, the work completion are some of the baseline data that's looked at. As far as assessment, um, we first of all start off with like the big picture of like, okay, what were we able to uh, cover uh, in our academic courses this year? How did things need to be adapted? And making sure, you know, what, and what were we able to cover for mastery versus more for um, just initial uh, um, you know, exposure? And making sure that we share that with uh, the teachers that are getting the students in the pre, the next year. We also look at some of the assessments and look at like, how does that data compare to previous years? And again, use that to uh, communicate to um, to teachers who are, who are receiving students, uh, so they know how um, you know, in a really global level, kids were impacted uh, by uh, this, this COVID year and last spring. Uh, we'll also then next year use uh, diagnostic and preliminary assessments. Some of those are, or many of those assessments are assessments that we already have, but we might be looking at them with a, a bit of a different eye, knowing that this year has been so extraordinary. Those could include things like an initial uh, English essay or response to literature where we could see, you know, how are kids doing as far as comprehending uh, literature or uh, composing their ideas in writing or um, expressing certain um, aspects within the English curriculum uh, that they were exposed to uh, last year or the year before. They also could be initial pre-assessments, like very often in our math classes, they will do uh, pre-assessments at the beginning of the year to see, you know, where they're starting from. And so we'll continue to use those and use those, you know, with even greater need uh, next year. But also looking at the first unit assessment, which might have some review built into it, but also might have a, an initial expectation of what kids can handle in that first unit. And we'll see how did their results um, compare to a typical year. Uh, also in world languages, we'll look at their reading, writing, listening and speaking assessments and seeing again how they, um, where they're coming in and how we can meet them where they're at. We're also considering using this, something called STAR um, assessments, which have reading and math. And they also have early literacy at the uh, uh, early grades. And we're considering using those in the middle school and in grades nine and ten, uh, especially if funding becomes available, because they are a, a bit costly. But it's something that's being used in, in several districts in the region. And, and also as, you know, MCAS in the grades where MCAS is tested. And if we get those results as we typically do, being able to see, you know, um, both individually and globally, where are some of the holes of, with respect to performance uh, in, in the areas that are tested by MCAS. The adjustment to practice, I think, is really um, gonna be incredibly important and it was this year as well. It's again, so where do we start off uh, the year? Um, what are some of the areas of learning that we know that kids did not globally um, get because of the pandemic year? Also looking at individual and small groups of students and how do we support them in unique ways uh, considering, you know, this extraordinary year. These are things that we do typically, but we're gonna have to do them with even great, um, greater deliberation as far as making sure that we really meet kids where they're at. Um, we'll also have, look to have some uh, professional development related to uh, COVID, post-COVID practices, whether again, that's around, you know, um, ongoing assessment and differentiation, but also around trauma-informed practices, realizing that kids are gonna come in, uh, you know, really impacted by these last, this last year and a half. Um, as far as kind of a tier one intervention at grade six, we've always done some focused executive functioning work with particular groups of kids in our intervention block. And we're looking to see if we could pilot a small number of those lessons across the grade and really kind of measure their impact. Uh, feeling that we see that lots of kids, especially in sixth grade, really need those things. Then other kids in seventh and eighth grade, uh, as well as, you know, potentially at the high school, if they need those, they might get them, but more as a tier two. It might be a smaller group of kids who need more than what would they receive in sixth grade. Uh, as well as looking at targeted advisory lessons or other SEL lessons that might be happening throughout the curriculum. As far as intervention and support, again, we start with our structures. So DSP and after-school help, whether it's teacher or student initiated, we'll be really looking to maximize that structure that's in place to make sure that kids have opportunities when they're struggling or when a teacher has um, identified a kid or a group of kids who really needs more than is typical, that we can who really needs more than is typical, that we can kind of meet them where they're at. We have opportunities at the high school for some, um, online classes, whether it's for a particular kind of unit or whole class credit recovery. So we expect that that will continue to be used and it might be more amplified in its necessity next year. We'll also look at small group and individual counseling supports. Trying to do small groups whenever possible, whenever that's effective, because of obviously it creates a peer group, but also is a little bit more efficient. So looking for that. And then potential additional after-school intervention and support, especially dependent upon a COVID funds. We're spending, we're expecting some, you know, COVID funds and some of that will be earmarked towards remediation. And so, you know, depending on the size of that fund, um, being able to kind of, you know, flexibly identify here are kids that might need additional support that goes beyond what we're able to do in the school day. At RAMS, we have after-school help and support as well. Again, we have the interventionist, when they identify small groups of kids, they'll have like a small, say, six-week intervention with kids. It might be an academic intervention that's really helping them to, uh, progress in an area that's struggling. Or there's also social emotional interventions that are primarily delivered through our social, social worker and our BCBA to help kids who have targeted social emotional needs. You know, whenever possible, those interventions are kind of again, small periods of time, six weeks. Let's measure their effectiveness and hopefully they are able to support them themselves while still having some contact with the counselors or interventionists after that. But we continue to monitor them and support them as necessary. Some things that will be happening in both levels where, um, as well as the elementary. And this first one is extend the school year for students with disabilities who exhibited, you know, significant regression. A learning support schedule for students on IEPs and also individual and small group counseling that is customary, but will be again, really monitoring which kids need that and making sure that they get that support. Now at the elementary level, um, we have structures in place. We have weekly student assistant teams, which again is a large group of, of, of people from different aspects of the school to really, um, look at student data and identify kids who are struggling and looking at data to see what areas they need support in. We also have weekly student support teams, which again is around the social emotional perspective. It is led by counselors along with our assistant principals. We also have the, the structure of formal, you know, math and literacy assessments three times a year in order to have that data going forward. Um, so some of the data are some of those, um, we can look at our, you know, just how they're doing on their report cards with respect to standards, looking at those math and literacy assessments. Looking at work completion, counselor reports, attendance, parent communications, and also student self-advocacy, especially at a grade three through five level. What does assessment look like in order to identify struggling kids and figure out what they need at the elementary? You know, we have again, those ELA and math assessments three times per year. The ELA assessments include DIBELS as well as a benchmark assessment, which really looks at different reading behaviors. We also do running records where we can do shorter ongoing assessments on a more regular basis to understand how they're doing in literacy. We have math unit benchmark assessments, so assessments at the end of each unit. And especially looking at the ones at the beginning of the year, mid-year and towards the end of the year to see where kids are at and are they meeting the, um, learning expectations? Or do they need intervention in a particular area? Again, when we see, identify a group of kids that are struggling, we'll have this 10-week progress monitoring, uh, system where we'll continue to see how they're doing and progressing based upon what teachers are doing in the classroom as well as interventions that they might be having outside of the classroom. Um, and, and seeing if they're progressive and seeing if they're able to kind of stand on their own after that. Again, we'll consider using the STAR reading and math assessments in pre-K through five, in K through five. There also again is an early literacy assessment, which also can be used as a dyslexia screener. So it's a kind of, kind of dual purpose that we'd be using if we go with that STAR reading. Uh, we also have assessments that are for our English language learners that we use as well as MCAS in grades three through five. Again, adjustments to practice, kind of similarly, we have units of study that we've really just begun to build using our fountain and pen materials. And we'll adapt those based upon what we were able to accomplish this year, what our assessments say this year, and what also our assessments say at the beginning of next year. Uh, we also continue to alter our math scope and sequence to make sure it's meeting the needs of again, what the, what the reality was of this last year and a half and how we're starting off next year. And with that, we use a workshop model that really provides tremendous opportunities for small group instruction as well as individual conferencing. And we're trying to push those same methods at the math classes too, as well as other classes, so that we have opportunities for whole group instruction as well as small group, uh, needs, as well as kind of individual confirming and feedback. Uh, so those are methods that we'll use in order to, um, adjust. As far as intervention and support at the elementary, uh, we have social emotional interventions provided by counselors. Again, those can be individual or small group. They can be for the entire year or they could be for a period of six weeks. We're really helping kids to overcome a challenge that they might be having in the social emotional realm while still continuing to check in on them after that. We have academic intervention and reading and math. Most of those happen during the school day. There's a little bit, especially at the fifth grade level that happened after school. If we had additional fundings, we'd be exploring, you know, continuing to bolster the in-school time, but also looking perhaps at Placentino before school or Miller after school, um, considering their, their, their time schedules. So that's the potential additional after-school intervention or support. Again, we have extended school year for some kids and there's learning supports for students or IPs. We'd also be looking if we got substantial funds. Uh, we have applied for a couple of grants through the state for both after-school and summer programming. So if that, those funds as well as other funds that came in as far as COVID, we continue some targeted summer supports that went beyond the students in our extended school year program, as well as some of our other kids that we've tried to expand that a little bit more already. Uh, but we'd look to expand that a little bit more to really target kids who, uh, we see, you know, were really highly impacted by this last year and a half, so that we could help them to be even ready, more ready to jump in next year. So again, that's our approach. We're really again, trying to balance, you know, doing what we can to support kids in extraordinary ways, while also trying to realize that kids kind of really need to get back to a sense of normalcy and overloading them with too much additional, um, you know, um, academic support that takes them away from whether it's, uh, after-school, just, you know, um, recreation or other things. We want to balance those things because we really believe that normalcy and kind of getting kids back is really going to, um, you know, with, with supports is going to bolster their readiness to learn and really is going to propel them. And so we want to balance, you know, kind of the pressure to do additional things with, uh, taking advantage of hopefully, uh, a situation next fall that feels a lot more normal and feels a lot more healthy, both socially emotionally and academically for kids.
Thank you, Peter. Would you mind, um, stop sharing the screen just so I can see everybody? Sorry.
Oh, wait, let me stop sharing, yes.
Thank you. Um, questions from the committee? And Louise?
Um, Peter, thank you. I know there must have been hours on hours of work that went into pulling that together. And it probably scratches the surface of everything that you've already been discussing with our educators. And, um, so I know there's a lot there. And I just have, I have a couple of questions across a couple of different areas, more just so I have a clear understanding. So, um, in the front of the presentation, I think you were talking strictly about identifying students who are struggling. And I'm not sure if that was at all levels or certain levels, because now I can't remember that far back. But, um, I was curious about the world language. You, you had in there, um, an initial proficiency, was it a proficiency test? RWLS in world language. I wasn't familiar, I'm not familiar with RWLS.
It's, um, reading, listening, writing and speaking. So we do assessments with students to understand how they're, uh, performing in those different areas. And we could be, we would then be seeing are there, you know, our school kids as a whole, you know, coming in at this level, we're going to meet them where they're at. Are there particular students that really are, um, much further behind than others? And what can we do to support them, uh, in those areas?
And is this K to 12 that you'll be doing the diagnostics?
Yeah, tho- those types of assessments are built in, yeah, in, in classes at, at all levels. And, um, you know, at the elementary level, especially the French, in, uh, in, in French, we also have, we do have a built-in French literacy, um, interventionist who is able to support kids in French, who are struggling in that area. We'll, we'll, we'll use that, that support in very targeted ways based upon kids who are really, um, you know, seem to be struggling as well as we also have a, um, a larger than typical number of kids who are coming into grade one who didn't take French in kindergarten. We've always had that. We've always had four or five kids. And typically, believe it or not, they actually typically, not all of them, quite well and didn't catch up. So we want to, we're not going to assume if we have 12 kids instead of four, that they're all, they're, they're not, they're not going to be able to kind of hit the ground running. But we're also not going to assume that they are. So we're going to look at, see, see how they're doing. And we'll, you know, target some of that French literacy support towards those kids, but as well as other kids in K through five.
Do you, th- this was kind of where I was headed. Do you feel that right now our teachers, especially at the elementary level, have the tools and resources for conducting those assessments? I know you mentioned it's sort of built into the curriculum, but I also vaguely recalled hearing that they were looking for some additional resources. Um, and I want to say it was somehow in almost like a French phonics program or what have you, but that they were looking for some additional resources. Is that still an outstanding need or has that been, is that being addressed?
I know some of the additional resources that we were looking at are, are built in, but I, I need to check to see if we were able to fund all of it.
Okay, that'd be really helpful to know about. Um, I just, the second thing was, um, more of a sigh of relief. I, I think I saw somewhere in there that in grade six, you're going to, um, be focusing on executive functioning and study skills. And I think that was across the board for all students. Was it, or is it just for, yes?
Yeah, in the, in the past, we've done it with kids we've identified. So we've been doing some really targeted executive functioning lessons at the middle school level in particular for kids who needed it. And from what we've learned from that and also taking into consideration this year, we thought it would be a good time to pilot a subset of those lessons for all kids in grade six, while still meeting other seventh and eighth graders who might need, uh, who might not have received them at all because they weren't identified previously, or who might need them anew, um, still have the opportunities to access those lessons too.
So this is one of those examples of something I think brilliant coming out of this pandemic. Uh, you know, kind of a bit of a silver lining. There is no limit to the value, I believe, um, that focusing on executive functioning and study skills at a young age can bring and help students prepare as they transition into an increasingly more demanding and changing academic environment in particular. And I, I would go so far as to say that implementing a, a different version of it, helping our, um, ninth graders prepare for what they're going to be encountering that's different at the high school is critical. I will just tell you that when one of my daughters, um, started college and it was, you know, a pretty demanding environment, um, they did that for their students across the board. And the basic message was, you know, you're here, this is a big challenge. Be proud of yourself and we're going to help you prepare to be successful. And it was a different set of study skills and, um, executive functioning skills that they needed at that next level. So I'm thrilled and I hope there's a way to kind of monitor the effectiveness of this.
Yeah, and I think we can, um, you know, uh, you know, that's largely led by our interventionist and our assistant principal at the middle school. And I know they're always willing to share what they're doing. So those certainly share that with, uh, both the elementary and the high school folks as well. Cause I know that they'll be at times targeted lessons, say in an advisory or in a particular class. So maybe those could be, you know, they'll at least have exposure to those. As well as if we're able to, um, you know, get that social emotional, uh, director. We know that executive functioning has a strong intersection into social emotional. I know my, my child, you know, her executive functions are okay. But then if she's in an emotional state where, uh, she's not in a greater place, they plummet. Um, and so we, we know that that's a major overlap. That's come out in a lot of our work around with Jessica Minahan and Nami Turk and others. So, um, that will be a kind of a string that we look at as we're trying to do the alignment that Dr. Cuska has talked about as far as, you know, how do we make sure that we're supporting kids in a social emotional way? Executive functioning, a lot of people don't think about that intersection, but it clearly is. So we'll look at that as well.
And then forgive me everyone, but the last point here, um, thank you for that. I, I, that's music to my ears. At the high school, I, you know, I saw everything that, um, is planned and it all makes sense. But I still worry that both in terms of academic and social and emotional support, that there just may not be enough there. And I, the slide isn't up anymore, but, um, I'm not, I'm not sure specifically what, um, what I would propose at this point. But it does concern me because I feel like at the elementary and the middle school, you know, there is these layers of extra, if you will, to deal with both identifying struggling students and then mitigation strategies for helping to support them. And, and I might be wrong, and please, this isn't at all criticism. It's more just concern, like, is there enough of a safety net there? But, um, I, I, I think what I'm observing is, is sort of our existing practices, which are great, being, you know, leveraged, but is, is that enough?
I think, I think what we're thinking, again, we want to start with our existing structures and existing people that we have and try to do things best we can there. But if we have additional funding, I think what we're thinking largely, both at the middle and the high school, but especially at the high school, is the need for some flexible supports. So hopefully we will have some funds to do some additional supports. And then the idea would be to get some people who can do both academic or social emotional intervention that our teachers or our counselors can't, you know, handle. That they would be able to, you know, we'd identify kids, we'd be able to identify their needs. And then they could give some targeted supports, again, hopefully for a shorter period of time in order to do so. So we're kind of prepared for that. We, we think because of the availability of kids, um, that having something that could be as flexible as possible would really be beneficial, exactly what that looks like to get a pool of, you know, people who could support math and English and science and, and then as well as social emotional. That will have to, you know, really research. I think some of it could be our own staff doing additional, uh, time. Uh, but it also might be some outside resources, uh, even online resources of, of, of people that could support, you know, via Zoom, um, in a way that like targets a kid, a certain group of kids and their needs. You know, whenever possibly we do group stuff, but it might be individual on occasion too. But it would, it would be tried to be more, a little bit more purposeful than kind of traditional, a kid seeking out a tutor and instead, instead of, we've identified this need, you know, this kid is struggling at the beginning of, or these kids are struggling in the beginning of the algebra class. The teacher is doing this to support. There's a small group who could need an additional dose of support for a period of time. Can we get them that? So again, we're, we're kind of prepared to add that layer. We're just a little bit dependent on funding. But hopefully, again, we know that there will be some COVID remediation funds, just to figure out how that pie is broken up in order to support that.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Cynthia?
Thank you, um, Peter, for putting this all together. It was way more comprehensive than I think I thought it was going to be. But I do have a couple of questions. One was, I just wanted, wondering if you could just expand a little bit on what that STAR assessment that you mentioned, because I don't think that I've heard that before. Along with, and you touched on MCAS, I was wondering if you could just kind of add, just talk a little bit more about how that's going to impact as we're going back to school. And then what was my third thing? I'll let you talk to those things and I'll figure out what my third thing. Oh, and the other was, could you share that with me so that I have that? Cause I don't have that document or is that not?
Yeah, yeah, I'll share with all of you. So, um, so MCAS, again, we're supposed to be having an abbreviated MCAS, uh, you know, in, in grades, um, three through eight. And so, you know, we will get some data back. They don't release all the questions, but will give us a sense of are there certain areas where kids in aggregate have struggled? And then we're also able to look at individual students to see how they struggle, if they struggled on a particular parts of, you know, say the math assessment or the English assessment. And so we always do some analysis of that data to know, again, as a whole, where are kids coming in? But also looking at particular kids and seeing which areas they might need, uh, support. And that informs, you know, not only the beginning of the year instruction in a given year, uh, but also how we weave in certain. learning standards, you know, in a way that might be atypical based upon what we learned from that data. MCAS only gives us so much data.
I was just going to say, that can't be more impactful than our local assessments that we do.
No, that's why you probably saw it as last, but it is something we use.
I just wanted to make that clear to the community too, though, that, you know, it's not on the high priority list of assessments for our children to be able to make.
No, it, it only gives us so much data and certainly, yeah, even in the STAR reading assessment as well, that, um, that is a, a quicker, uh, online assessment that can really help to target kids that are struggling in reading or math or early literacy. Uh, it can give us a sense of what areas they're struggling in. It's a good complement to the other assessments we do. It is not as deep as a, you know, a homegrown unit assessment. That's, you know, that's not done, but it, uh, it, it is useful as another touchstone. Um, and certainly again, the reading assessment that STAR would do is not as deep as our, it's called the benchmark assessment, which we do, we used to be, we used to do, use the DRA, but benchmark assessment is even, uh, a little bit more, uh, robust. Um, as well as some of the ongoing running records where we're listening to kids read and asking them questions and getting a sense of what they can comprehend and how, what their fluency is like. So those assessments give us much more depth, but these other ones give us a place to start that can be useful. And especially in this year, we felt the STAR reading, if we are able to get additional funds for assessment, it might be useful. And then we can determine, um, whether or not it's something we want to continue going forward. Um, but it's just another piece. But yeah, I think our homegrown assessments are deeper and, but again, these areas can kind of target, oh, we maybe need to do something to dig in a little deeper because of something we saw on, maybe on the MCAS, but it's, uh, perhaps on the STAR reading assessment, um, in order to do so.
Okay. And then I also just wanted to echo the sentiments that Ann-Louise mentioned about the executive functioning, whatever tier one. And, and honestly, I wouldn't even stick, stick with if it's at all possible, not with just sixth grade, but seventh and eighth as well. So if there's any way that we could expand that to the entire middle school, I feel like it could be well worth it. And that's my last statement about that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Uh, Peter, thank you for this. Um, at the program of studies night for the high school, um, Mrs. Kanoni brought up that, uh, geometry is going to be three terms. Am I saying that correctly? Moving to three terms. Um, are there other examples of changes in courses that are happening that you're aware of? You know, is part of their?
That's a great question.
Or anything?
Not, not in that way, no.
Okay. And, great. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Um, this evening, we don't have a newsletter and we don't have any warrants that have been signed. And I am going to leave April 15th as a posted meeting date, but there is a really strong chance that that meeting will be canceled unless we actually have an agenda item to discuss. Um, so I'm going to leave it open until Tuesday. Um, so stay tuned for that, but just as an FYI. At this point, we are going to, um, adjourn out of open session and go back into executive session. Um, to finish our, uh, collective bargaining strategy. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from open session and move into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining with HFT, uh, the teacher's unit for which we will not return.
Move by Cynthia.
Seconded by Ann-Louise.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Ann-Louise.
Ann-Louise, your hand is still up.
So. All in favor, uh, Dr. Severin?
Yeah.
Stefanik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes, it is eight twenty-six. Open session is now adjourned and, um, the committee holds, stay where you are. Thank you all and good night.